Good afternoon, and thank you all for attending the candidates forum today. And I am Laura Davis. I am the co-president of the Palatine Area League, which is Palatine, Inverness, Hoffman Estates, Schaumburg, and Rolling Meadows. And the Palatine Area League and the League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, Buffalo Grove, and Mount Prospect are co-sponsoring these forums with the Schaumburg Township District Library. And I've been asked to remind everyone that we are all volunteers. We're founded in 1920 out of the suffragette movement, giving women the right to vote. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that neither supports, opposes, or recommends candidates for office. The League's purpose is to promote responsibility through the informed and active participation of all citizens. Providing this forum allows citizens to become better informed about the issues facing the community and candidates running for office. We are pleased to offer this service to you. As you can see from our program, we will be holding three forums this afternoon. The first forum will be the candidates for the Cook County Commissioner District 15. The next forum will be candidates running for Illinois House District 56. And the last forum will be for candidates running for Illinois Congressional District 8. And I'm very pleased to introduce our moderator for today's forum, Kathryn Sawyer. And Ms. Sawyer is the Chief Advancement Officer for Oakton Community College and is also a League of Women Voters member. Thank you very much, Kathryn.
My pleasure to be with you. Thank you so much for taking time to come educated about the candidates who are on the ballot this season. As we get started, as Laura mentioned, I am a very proud member of the League of Women Voters. I will share that I live in downtown Palatine, therefore I don't vote in any of the races that will be discussed here today, thus the reason that I can be your moderator. Let me start with the rules. There are rules that we follow from the League of Women Voters. The ground rules are the following. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine their speaking order. As the moderator, I will rotate this order throughout the forum. Each candidate will have two minutes to make introductory remarks before we start with questions. Following their opening remarks, each candidate will have one minute to answer questions. Each candidate will also have the opportunity, two opportunities, to request a 30-second rebuttal to remarks made during the forum. As time draws to a close, and we have 50 minutes for this forum, each candidate will have one minute to make closing remarks. League members will act as timers, and they're right here in the front row. Candidates will be given a 30-second and 15-second warning, so please quickly complete your thoughts before you see the stop card. Time limits will be enforced out of respect to all candidates. Questions will be provided by the audience. Each question will be answered by both candidates, so please, audience, make sure that you're asking questions that pertain to all. League members have index cards. They are this color for this forum. Hopefully, you've received some, but there will be folks walking the aisle in case not, where you write your questions on, which will be picked up by volunteers. Questions will be reviewed for clarity, appropriateness, and to avoid duplication. Candidates have been asked not to interrupt one another, and the moderator will repeat the question if asked. They are to speak directly to the audience. Audience, you have a role in this forum too. First of all, we ask that you turn off your electronic devices. The forum is being taped by the League of Women Voters for use to educate the public. Candidates have agreed to this. Please hold all applause until the end, and please do not demonstrate in any way support or non-support for a candidate. There is space outside the forum, room for candidates to speak to supporters after the forum, and campaign literature will be available on tables outside. No campaign signs may be posted or displayed inside this forum room. We ask that you please be respectful to candidates and attendees. So with that, the first forum today is for the Cook County Commissioner race of the 15th District. In case you're not aware, the county board is made up of 17 commissioners who set policy and laws for the county regarding property, public health services, public safety, and maintenance of highways. Commissioners hold the same offices ex officio on the legally distinct Cook County Forest Preserve District. The 15th District includes all or parts of Arlington Heights, Barrington, Barrington Hills, Bartlett, Elgin, Elk Row Village, Hanover Park, Hoffman Estates, Inverness, Mount Prospect, Rolling Meadows, Roselle, Schaumburg, South Barrington, and Stringwood. With us today and on the ballot are Commissioner Timothy Schneider and challenger Kevin Morrison. The winner of November's election will serve a four-year term. With that, the speaking order for opening remarks will begin with Mr. Morrison, followed by Mr. Schneider. I thank you both for participating in the forum today. We'll start with your two-minute opening remark, and Mr. Morrison, you may begin now.
Thank you so very much. It is great to see so many people in this room today. My name is Kevin Morrison, and I'm running for Cook County Commissioner here in the 15th District against the chairman of the Illinois Republican Party. I am a local. I grew up here in Elk Row Village, and I'm proud to be a resident here in the northwest suburbs. There are many reasons why I decided to run for this seat and put my name on the ballot in the November elections. One being, most importantly, some major shifts we've seen in our political world, in which we are having elected officials who are not adequately representing the voices of the members and constituents in their districts, and instead are a voice for wealthy donors and multi-billion dollar corporations. I want to be a full-time voice, representing all residents here in the 15th District with the most critical issues that are facing our county here in the northwest suburbs and across Cook County. My top priorities as Cook County Commissioner would be first and foremost to see fixes that will finally, once and for all, fix our broken property tax system, and finally give the break our hard-working families here in the northwest suburbs deserve. Secondly, I would really like to see policies that expand affordable healthcare and mental healthcare services in the northwest suburbs and across Cook County. And also, in addition, I would like to see policies that protect our small business community, but most importantly, make it more affordable for new small business development. That way, we could see our 35 percent empty storefronts in the northwest suburbs begin to fill up. I'm sincerely asking for your support in the upcoming elections. If you have any questions, please feel free to come and approach me after the forum, or you may go to my website, kevinbmorrison.com. If you send me an email, I receive every correspondence, and I respond promptly. We just opened our office at Bodie and Salem Road. It's open every single day. Feel free to come in with questions, and hopefully to come and lend a hand in these final 17 days. Thank you to the League for putting this forum together.
Thank you, sir. And now, Mr. Schneider, please, your two minutes begins now.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm delighted to be here today with you, and I want to thank the League for hosting this important event. I'm Tim Schneider, and I've had the honor and privilege of representing the 15th District of Cook County for the past 12 years. In those years, I have pushed back against Chicago mandates being forced on suburban families and businesses. I fought the increases in the sales tax and dozens of other taxes, most recently leading the repeal of the ill-conceived soda tax. I have worked with other governmental units to secure the guarantee of interchanges on I-90 at Meacham Road, at Roselle Road, and at Barrington Road, providing enormous economic benefit to the northwest suburbs for decades to come. In addition, I have lobbied for tens of millions of dollars in motor fuel tax funds collected by the county to be spent in the 15th District. I have, in the last eight years, helped provide small business incentives that created $266 million in private investment in the 15th District. I have worked to provide county healthcare services for individuals in the northwest suburbs with a new Vista Clinic facility opening up next month in Arlington Heights with 24 new exam rooms, six dental offices, and capacity for 37,000 patient visits per year. Yes, I've asked the county to tighten its belt, just as suburban families have had to tighten their belts over the last decade. County government should run like a business, not a patronage machine. I'm against new revenue. In fact, I'm proposing a two-thirds majority vote of the board to impose any new taxes on the people of Cook County. My opponent is for more revenue and higher taxes. I listen to my residents. I've listened to local governments and business groups within my district to ensure that the values and wishes of their district is represented on the county board. I thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. If you have questions, please make sure you write them on the cards and send them to the aisles. I'll start with a few of my own. First of all, gentlemen, what are the top two or three most important challenges facing our county, and how do you propose to address them? Mr. Schneider, would you go first? One minute, please.
Well, the biggest challenge for suburban voters in the 15th District and throughout Cook County and Illinois is property taxes. Property taxes are killing our Cook County families. What's happening is when I go door-to-door and I talk to business groups, all they tell me is that when their parents are gone and their children are out of high school, they're moving out of Cook County. That is a tragedy. We need to reverse that. We need to lower taxes. We don't need to further burden the residents of Cook County. We also need to look at providing healthcare, which we are doing with our new Vista Clinic in Arlington Heights. My opponent wants a clinic in the 15th District, probably like to have a clinic at every corner like a McDonald's. But we all have to live within our means in Cook County. We also provide transportation to our healthcare services in the county. These two issues are probably the most important things encompassing what the voters that I talk to envision their county commissioner to look into. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morrison, one minute, please.
I've knocked tons of thousands of doors throughout the 15th District, and I'm well versed in the issues that expand the gamut throughout the entirety of the 15th District. I do not propose any new taxes on our hard-working, middle-class families. We do not need more taxes. It's time multi-billion dollar corporations begin paying their fair share in property tax, and it's time our households in the northwest suburbs and our small business community get the breaks that they deserve. I do strongly believe we need to expand healthcare and mental healthcare services in the northwest suburbs and in Cook County. I've spoken to too many residents who have to travel upwards of 45 minutes to an hour to the nearest affordable healthcare clinic. We do not have those adequate services. No, I do not want them on every single corner, but I would love at least one within the 15th District for our 300,000 residents. I think it's critical, especially when it comes to mental healthcare. We pay $60,000 plus a year for an inmate at Cook County Jail when 50 percent of the inmates are there for mental services alone.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's stick with that idea of taxes, though. You've both mentioned that. So, the effective state and local tax rate on a Illinois household earning a median U.S. income is the highest in the nation. The U.S. Census Bureau data indicates that high taxation levels are a contributing factor to a trend in population loss, including an outflow to neighboring Midwestern states. What revenue-raising or budget-cutting ideas do you support? Mr. Morrison?
I think we need to do a better job pushing forward policies that help protect our current small business community, but most affordably, make it more affordable for new small business development. If we are pushing forward policies that help fill up these empty storefronts that litter the northwest suburbs, every new small business we create is a brand-new source of revenue to the county, state, and municipality. It's those types of policies that are part of my vision on the Cook County Board and that I believe need to be implemented. Those are the new sources of revenue I think that the county and the residents of the 15th District want to see by growing our local economies, creating more jobs, and pushing forward policies that uplift middle-class families throughout Cook County.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
Well, Mr. Morrison, I believe you have a problem with the truth. You've told the Daily Herald, and you've told these people here, you actually told the Daily Herald that there are 35 percent storefront vacancy in the village of Schaumburg. Well, I had just had lunch with the village manager of Schaumburg two days before, and the mayor, so I called them, and I asked them. The vacancy rate in storefronts in Schaumburg is 7.6 percent. The vacancy rate in the Elk Row Business Park is 3 percent. The economy in the district is going well. Now, to the question of saving money. Our jail population, the population in the juvenile temporary detention center, has gone down 30 percent without any commensurate reduction in budget at either of those facilities. We need to collect the money due to us at the hospital. We are not billing correctly. We're not coding correctly. And where has the $475 million in sales tax that was burdened on the people of Cook County gone to in the last four years?
Thank you. A follow-up to that. One way which has been shown to cut costs in government is to consolidate departments. What are your ideas regarding consolidation or sharing services in county government departments? Mr. Schneider, you're first.
Well, that's an easy one for me. I've led the charge to consolidate the clerk, the treasurer, the recorder of deeds, and the assessor into one Department of Tax Administration in the county. I didn't get a collective group to do that, but I did get approval to merge the clerk and the recorder of deeds. So as of 2020, there will be one, those two offices will have merged, and I was a leader in that consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
To clarify, it was 35 percent empty storefronts in the entirety of the northwest suburbs, not just Schaumburg alone. But I would like to say I think we need to do a better job working with all of the various departments of county government, as well as working with various municipalities, and finding where there is overlap, and where we could coordinate and find better ways to use our taxpayer dollars the most efficient way possible. Those are the policies we need to see moving forward, and that's why it's so critical that we have a full-time commissioner who is there for every single meeting, being a voice for all the critical issues facing the families here in the northwest suburbs.
Thank you. A question from the audience on taxes. Do you support or oppose a soda tax, and why? Mr. Morrison?
I've been opposed, and clearly so, of the soda tax and its burdens and its place on our families here in the northwest suburbs, most importantly, our small business community. My family owns and operates an Italian restaurant, and we were hit hard by the soda pop tax. I am not in support of any new regressive taxes that burden our middle-class families. We need to see policies that uplift middle-class families throughout Cook County, and that's why I think we need to find new sources of revenue, like creating better small business incentives. Yes, we have good policies with the Six B and Seven programs, but they are not doing enough to see the small business creation that I envisioned for our county and our district.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, the soda tax.
Well, I led the repeal against the ill-conceived soda tax. It was not only an awful tax for the people of the 15th District that border four other counties, that they had to drive into another county to purchase their soda, but the reverberating effect and the ripple effect of that is when people were having to buy their soda outside of Cook County, they began to buy everything outside of Cook County. They bought all their goods and services out of Cook County. And guess what? How long is a Costco, or a Jewel, or a Mariano's going to stay in business when all their purchases are being made outside of the county? So what happens is, not only are you inconvenienced by that, that business goes out of business, the employees lose their jobs. Who's going to make up the property taxes for those businesses? You are, all the residents that are left to pay the property taxes, and who's going to, and where are these people going to go to get good jobs? Thank you.
Thank you. Another significant budget item for the county is the Cook County Health and Hospital System. What are your ideas to make Stroger Hospital more fiscally sound in serving the county's constituents, and what does the hospital need to do to distinguish themselves? Mr. Schneider?
With the influx of cash from the Affordable Care Act, the subsidy to Cook County from the health system has gone from $481 million, down to $102 million. Now, my first question is, where has that other $379 million gone? We need to find out where they're spending all that money. Now, what we need to do in the hospital is we need to have our doctors and our nurses coding and billing better. The Cook County Office of the Inspector General found $165 million of unbilled receipts that we could have had. That's an abomination. When we heard about it, my opponent says I should have heard about it sooner, but as you know, we established an independent hospital board many years ago, and they are independent of us. We approve their budget. So once I found out about it, I called for a complete examination. We need to take the 330,000 patients that we have in county care and have them use county services, not other providers.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Which is exactly why we need to see a Cook County clinic opened in the northwest suburbs here in the 15th District. I believe we need to do a better job in making sure that there's far more transparency in how Cook County taxpayer dollars are being spent. I think that we could, not only in terms of Stroger Hospital, ensure that we are getting the best deals for all the products that are coming in, but also making sure that we are regularly meeting with staff and finding out exactly what their needs are, and how to best and most reliably use taxpayer dollars at Stroger Hospital and throughout Cook County Medical as a whole. I am a strong supporter of the expansions we've seen in healthcare, and I think it's incredibly important that here in Cook County, that we protect them despite all attacks on the ACA that we are seeing in Washington. I think it's vitally important that we are providing top-of-the-line healthcare services to all residents, and that is something we need to see down the road.
Thank you. Sticking with the topic of healthcare, the question from the audience is, how are you going to address the mental health concerns in our community? We'll start with Mr. Morrison.
This is something that directly I find a top priority of something we need to really see here in Cook County. Just recently, I met a grandmother whose grandson at 21 came down with schizophrenia, and she was told that to get full-time treatment here in Illinois, it would take two years. They actually recommended that she check in her grandson at Cook County Jail. I don't know if you know this, but Cook County Jail is the largest provider of mental health services in the entire United States of America. That is heartbreaking and something we need to do a far better job, and a statistic I am heart-set on changing as Cook County Commissioner. This is exactly why we need to see an expansion of mental health services throughout Cook County. My opponent says we cannot afford to do so, but that is not the fact. We are spending $60,000 plus per inmate right now to receive mental healthcare services in a jail. Those are our grandchildren. Those are our kids. Those are our friends and our family members who are forced to go to a prison to receive mental health services, and that must end.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
Well, once again, my opponent is not delivering to you the facts. I have been a leader in trying to get mental health services provided to the people that are especially in our juvenile detention center and in the Cook County Jail. Not only have we reduced the population of the Cook County Jail from over 10,000 to under 7,000, but now every one of those individuals that's in the Cook County detention can access mental health services. Do you know that at any one time, 70 percent of all the people in the Cook County Jail have a substance abuse problem or a behavioral issue? We are now, over the past two years, because I've advocated for greater mental health services for the people in our jail, they're getting those services there. They're getting them at the juvenile temporary detention center. We're also providing those services at this new Vista Clinic that I helped get placed in Arlington Heights. Yeah, would I have liked to have it in the 15th District? It's three minutes outside of the 15th District, and that's where the hospital decided to put it. Thank you.
Thank you. You've both mentioned the judicial system in your responses, so let's pivot to a question about that. One of the county's largest budget items is the Cook County Criminal Justice System. The cost to the county to have a person in jail pre-trial is approximately $150 per day. During the past year, there's been an emphasis on decreasing the number of people in jail as a result of their inability to post bail. However, the use of electronic monitoring has impacted defendants by penalizing them with fines and fees. What steps would you take to reduce the number of people in jail pre-trial? Mr. Schneider?
Okay, I want to start by telling you a little story. I go into the Cook County Jail on a somewhat regular basis. The last time I was in there, I talked to a gentleman that was married with two children. And I said, "What are you in here for?" He said, "I stole something out of a grocery store, but I can't afford my $1,500 bond." How long have you been here? Eight months. At $143, now $150 a day, this guy's been in jail because he can't afford his $1,500 bond. So I've been in favor, and I've worked with President Preckwinkle, yes, I do work with President Preckwinkle, to make sure that we reduce our jail population by allowing these people out on I-bonds so they can go back to their families. He can be a husband to their wife and a father to their children, and also, he had a $14-an-hour job that he had to leave that he will never get again. This is what we need to do. We've reduced the jail population. I support the president on this, and she's done a good job.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
I think we need to do a far better job of criminal justice reform. I do believe that there have been many steps that have been taken place that not have only helped reduce the prison population, but help allow people to get back into their communities as they await trial. I think that needs to be furthered, but it is incredibly important, especially if we're sending people home and keeping them under house arrest. Well, that does have a huge impact on their jobs, and I do think that when it comes to non-violent offenses, we need to do a better job of allowing them to get re-immersed with their communities and allowing them not only to work, but provide for their families. And those are the policies and reforms I would really like to see as we continue down the road of criminal justice reform.
Thank you. And follow-up, would you support having a criminal justice committee to oversee the problems with electronic monitoring? Mr. Morrison?
I think that could be a really good idea in helping make sure that the program is efficient and doing what it's set out to do. I think that any way that we could find better evaluation of how we are treating people who have, yes, maybe, yes or no, committed crimes, but making sure that we're putting them on a path of recovery and putting them on a better road forward. It's very upsetting to see how many people who have served their time and are trying to get re-immersed in their communities, but now they are having trouble finding work and employment and trying, in the attempt to live a better life and do better for their communities, they really find it really troubling to do so, and it's too often that they end up just re-entering the prison system. And I think we need to do more of bridging community and bringing people together and allowing people who have committed crimes to be re-immersed into our community and allow them to not only work, but be able to provide for their families.
Thank you. Let's pivot to the topic of homelessness in our community.
I don't think I answered that question.
There's been some confusion within your offices.
I'm sorry. I didn't answer that question.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You may.
I apologize. Yes, please. Mr. Schneider, please answer that question. My apologies.
That's all right. Thank you very much. Well, we already have a criminal justice committee at the county, so Mr. Morrison doesn't even know that what committees there are at the county. We have a criminal justice committee. They should take up the interest of this issue. What I look at every day is while we've seen a 3,000-person reduction, take $3,000, multiply it by $55,000 or $60,000, whatever number you want to use, and that's what we're saving without those 3,000 people being in the jail. Well, where are the resources? Why can't we use that money to provide the behavioral resources, the housing resources? We have many of these people in our jail that are veterans. We need to take care of these people. 76 percent of the people in the jail are there for non-violent offenses. Let's get them out on electronic monitoring. Let's give these people with the savings we've got from people that are not in the jail, let's use it to provide behavioral health services, housing services, job placement services, and eliminate the recidivism rate in our jail.
Thank you. Pivoting now to the topic of homelessness in our community, there's been some confusion within your offices about the right of the homeless to vote using a shelter address. What will you do to protect all people's right to vote? And Mr. Schneider, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Well, I, you know, I have a niece who's lieutenant in Kosovo right now detonating bombs. She's an Explosive Ordnance Division member. My father served in the Philippines, and my brother served in Vietnam in the 101st Airborne. They served so each and every one of us could have the right to vote. The right to vote is one of our most important privileges, and everybody should have that right to vote, whether you live in a home, in a shelter, or anywhere you live. Everyone deserves that critical, most important right to vote. That's what makes a difference between us and other countries. People from- People from other countries come here because we have the freedoms and the right to vote. So, everyone deserves that right, and I support that.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Well, I think that first and foremost, my opponent represents a party that across the United States has sought to disenfranchise voters, primarily minority voters and those of lower economic backgrounds. I've seen policies implemented on statewide bases that allow for homeless individuals who have specific corners or wherever they choose to call their own home, use that as their address and to use things like pictures, and allow them to be able to not only register so that they can have their voice be heard in elections, but to do so where they're actually staying. Now, I think we need to do a lot of a better job to making sure we are reducing our homeless population. The vast majority of people who are living in homelessness are those who need mental healthcare, and right now, it is far too expensive for far too many people across Cook County and the nation, and we need to do a better job of seeing those expansions, and that will help keep people off the streets.
Thank you. Police Chief Eddie Johnson has stated that Chicago does not have a violence problem, Chicago has a gun problem. According to the Chicago Police Department's 2014 report on the impact of illegal guns on violence in Chicago, 20% of the guns recovered at crime scenes were traced to four stores. What specific steps would you take to stop the illegal guns involved in crimes in Cook County? We'll begin with Mr. Morrison.
It breaks my heart that in the very public schools that I studied in here in the 15th District, where I had tornado drills, we're having kids go through active shooter drills. We should not be sending students to the classroom with the fear of not if, but when will there be an active shooter on their campus. We need to do a far better job of keeping illegal guns off the streets, making sure we're stopping straw purchases, but we need to make sure that we are keeping guns out of the hands of those with criminal backgrounds and making sure that those who are law-abiding gun owners keep and are responsible for the weapons that they store in their homes and do not allow them to fall into the wrong hands. My opponent voted no on continuing Cook County's assault weapons ban, which it, just the thought alone of seeing assault weapons on the streets of Chicago are just incredibly frightening. I think we need to do a better job of expanding public safety, and I know the families here in the district agree.
Mr. Schneider?
Thank you. All these issues regarding guns in Cook County that come before the county board are non-binding resolutions. All they're doing is they're giving one of my fellow commissioners a soapbox to stand on so they can run for Congress or something like that. I oppose those things. I vote for things that impact the people of the county and that I can actually affect. I believe in common sense gun restrictions. I believe in them. I'll buck my party on them, even though the county doesn't deal with them. But when I, after the massive shooting about four or five weeks ago in Chicago, I met with Danny Davis, I met with Richard Boykin, I met with the Democrats on the board, and we held a press conference. They said it's not so much about the guns, it's about jobs. It's about giving these people opportunities for a future. It's about jobs, it's about opportunities, it's about turning their lives around, and then they won't seek these lives of crime.
Thank you very much. Cook County is a large area with many transportation options which may not always work together. What are your ideas to reduce congestion on Cook County roads? We'll start with Mr. Schneider, please.
Well, that's a good question. It's, I mean, a lot of people don't understand the myriad of roadways we have. We have township roads, we have county roads, we have state roads, we have village roads, and all these entities have to work together to provide transit, and if you've been around lately, it's gridlock, isn't it, with all the construction that's going on? But to provide for, and that's why the Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways has developed a strategic plan that I supported for the next five-to-ten-year plan that mixes rail and vehicle transportation. Once again, I made it a lot easier for people in all the northwest suburbs to get around when I allowed for, not allowed for, but I assisted in getting the interchanges at Rozell Road, Barrington Road, and at Meacham Road, also increasing, Zurich would never have built without that access of Meacham. Sunstar would never have built in Rozell, off Rozell Road, without that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Morrison?
I think we need to do a better job, especially with the metropolitan city and the incredible suburbs we have, in expanding and seeing the growth of public transportation, especially with hardcore issues that we are facing and a 12-year deadline when it comes to climate change. I think it is incredibly important that we see the expansion of rail as well as bus. I've met with families in Hanover Township who live in the Elgin portion, but it is about, you know, a 10, 20-minute bus ride to go to downtown Elgin, and that's their only way to find a bus that will take them to Woodfield. So, we need to do a better job of expanding the pay system throughout the northwest suburbs of Cook County, especially when it comes to allowing them to not only get into the city, but get to their jobs and get to their families. It's something that I think should be seen as a top priority and something I want to see implemented.
Thank you. Next question from the audience, what is the impact of immigration on Cook County, and what do you think should be done about it? We'll start with Mr. Morrison.
I'm sorry, could you repeat real quick?
What is the impact of immigration on Cook County, and what would you do about it?
Oh, well, I could start with the story of my family. My grandparents were off-the-boat Italians. They came to this country in the 50s. My grandpa literally sold vegetables out of the van and used the money he saved from that to open his first small business. The immigrant population that we have in Cook County is crucial to seeing our economic growth, to seeing more jobs, to seeing expansions in the well-being throughout the entire county and for all our families. I was very fortunate to grow up in Algro Village. I grew up in a very diverse neighborhood, and I see the true gift of being able to not only meet, but learn about the experiences and culture of people from different backgrounds, and that's something that we need to protect, because in the end, the vast majority of us, especially in this room, are of an immigrant background, and I think it is beautiful that we are a country that was built by the hard work and dedication of immigrants.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, the impact of immigration on Cook County, and what would you do about it?
Well, you can't imagine the diverse cultures in the 15th District. We're just like a melting pot of different nationalities. We have Indian, Korean, Chinese, African-American, Hispanic. It's amazing as you go around. Each one of these people provides great value to the people of Cook County and to our entire culture. I think what we're getting to, though, with immigrants is, and I'll be, maybe I'll stick my foot in it, but we need to provide immigrants, they, healthcare. It's a respect thing. Everybody is entitled to healthcare. I think that's where the question was kind of going. Are we, should illegal immigrants be afforded healthcare? Absolutely, absolutely. It's a right. When you're here, it's a right. I believe, if we want to talk nationally, I believe in securing our borders. I believe in that. I believe we're a nation of borders. Every nation is a nation of borders. We need borders. Those people are here, and it's our duty to provide for them.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, the next question from the audience, what are your thoughts about minimum wage? And we'll start with Mr. Schneider, please.
Okay, the issue of minimum wage and paid sick leave, increase the minimum wage to $13 an hour and paid sick leave became before the county board. I voted no, because it creates an unlevel playing field in a border district between my district and Lake, Kane, DuPage, and McHenry County that border my district. You would see no retail growth on the border of the county if we implemented increased minimum wage and increased paid sick leave. You'd see all of our businesses growing on the other side of Lake Cook Road, on the other side of Route 25 in Elgin. You would see that. We cannot create an unlevel playing field. That's what we would be doing. What we need to do is increase minimum wage at a state and national level, so we have a level playing field with everyone regarding these issues. I also believe minimum wage can be raised by economic factors. Of a better economy, people have to pay people more. I'm having to pay my people more because of this economy.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
As we've seen for the past few decades, if the law is not implemented, wages do not increase, nor at the pace as does our economy. I'm a strong believer that we must push for a living wage. Think how crucial that would be. If you are helping grow the wages of our families, you are seeing more money that is going in their pockets so they can grow their local economies, and that's something I'm going to be all about. I think there are better ways that we could help benefit our business community by fixing our broken property tax system, by pushing forward policies that give better deals when it comes to licensing agreements. There are other ways that we could help minimize the costs that government pays on business, the ability of allowing them to help increase wages for their employees. Now, my opponent during the Sun Times interview made the statement, "Oh, this kid thinks you could raise a family on $85,000 a year." Now, the majority of families here in the northwest suburbs have a median income of around $75,000 annually. That means half of the people in this district receive less. We need to do a better job of that.
Thank you. Stop, please. Next, is the sales tax disparity with other counties a problem? Why or why not? Mr. Morrison?
I think that in terms of the sales tax, we need to be pushing forward policies that are helping drive our small business community, and if they are too high, we are going to be keeping people from going to the stores within our localities. And I think what we need to be seeing are incentives for people to buy locally. It's one of the reasons why I want to see better growth when it comes to farm produce and the like, and especially for our restaurant community. And I think, no, I, sorry, I apologize. I missed the part of the question when you asked it originally.
Why or why not? Do you think it's a problem?
Oh, I think it's a problem because it disadvantages our small businesses that are local from people actually buying locally and instead turning to buying online.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, sales tax disparity between the counties. Thank you.
Sales tax disparity is huge. It's a huge issue. When I did my endorsement interview at the Sun Times, Monique at the Sun Times said to me, she said, "I couldn't believe that soda tax. I had to drive outside of Cook County to buy my soda, but then they repealed it." But the problem is, I found out that the sales tax wasn't just 1% more outside of Cook County, it was 3% more in DuPage County because of the RTA taxes, the village taxes and things like that. So, she said, "I came, I buy my groceries and my, and all of my small goods in Cook County now that the soda tax isn't in place anymore, but I just went out and bought all new outdoor furniture. Guess where I bought that? I bought that in DuPage County because I saved 3%. We need to lower the taxes, level the playing field in Cook County, and have people buy their goods and services here, not outside the county."
Thank you. We both answered that question, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I get a little lost in all these questions. There are a lot of good questions, and I want to be able to ask them all. Next, how can the county keep Grove contractors accountable for the quality of work and materials used on our roads? And we'll start with Mr. Schneider.
Well, every county road project, every state road project has a county or a district or a state employee engineer at every site. So, I believe that there are eyes and ears on all of that. As you know, in the past, we have had contractors that have gotten into trouble and at times gone to jail for having empty trucks go up and they weren't weighed properly and things like that. But if that happens, they get caught, they're responsible. All the road projects are bid with all the specs on how many, how much bituminous, which is asphalt, how much concrete, how much of everything. They're all bid pretty well, and I think there's pretty good checks and balances in place. When you get something, you get a job done. I can believe that, for the most part, that it's been done properly.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
What I think is most crucial is making sure that we are hiring and contracting locally and helping bring people to help improve our roads and keep them drivable for all of our families, because I know that is a critical concern. Too many people are not happy with the bumpy roads that we have in some parts of the district. But I think a major issue is the fact that, especially sometimes on the county board, we have contracted and brought in the workforce from places like Indiana. When we have enough workers here in the state of Illinois who could be receiving that paycheck and putting that hard-earned revenue back into their local county and into their municipalities. So, I think what we need to do a better job of is making sure that the workforce that we are putting to maintain our roads have a stake in making sure that they're doing a good job because of the roads that they travel on every single day.
Since we only have two rebuttals, I may as well rebut this. First of all, there is a local government, local business preference at the county. So, if someone can actually be higher in cost than somebody outside of the county, but they still get the job because we believe in doing business locally. So, we do have a local business preference. The problem is, if it's going to be 10% more, you know, maybe another $200, $300, $400,000 more on a bid, do you want to pay that? I don't think so, but I think some reasonableness with a 2% or 5% preference is allowable. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more question, and then we'll move to closing statements. My question is, the current political climate has become more partisan and divisive at all levels of government than we've seen in many years. Recognizing the compromise is often the most productive way to progress. What issues are you willing to reach across the aisle to find middle ground on? And we'll start with Mr. Morrison.
I think it is incredibly important that we get rid of this partisan atmosphere that has been affecting and plaguing our government. My opponent is the chairman of the Illinois Republican Party, and he often claims that he is a bipartisan voice, yet he is someone who is representing a party statewide here in Illinois. I think in terms of how we need to find middle ground is making sure that we are always sitting down at the table with people of both parties and making sure that we are adequately representing the voices and the constituents in our district. Too long, we have had dark money enter our political system, which has put this partisanship right forward. I don't know if many of you have seen, we have a dark money group that is aligned with the Koch Brothers that has spent $100,000 against me in my campaign and in support of my opponent. We will never see who those donors are who are contributing to that group, and I think that that is shady, and we need to see that eliminated from our government process.
Mr. Schneider?
Well, I think you went off point a little bit, but since you did, I may as well mention that you've received over $300,000 from the public employee unions and Cook County Democratic Party. I will never, in my wildest dreams, outspend his candidacy. I promise you. If I'm supported by business groups, I love it. Okay, so, I have worked with the other side of the aisle. There are four Republicans and 13 Democrats on the Cook County Board. I have a great relationship with all of them. In fact, two of them called me last night, told me that my opponent had just called them, trying to get dirt on me. And so, they told me about that. He doesn't know that I have friends across the party lines. I've been able to create a court of accountability study in the county across party lines. I've been able to create the office of the inspector, independent inspector general across party lines. I've been able to repeal the ill-conceived soda tax across party lines. I created the unincorporated task force across party lines. I created a Cook County ethics ordinance that reduced the amount people could give to county commissioners.
Can I use my rebuttal?
There is one rebuttal.
Thank you kindly. Now, mind you, my opponent has been, or, my opponent, my campaign has been fully funded by small-dollar donations from the very beginning of this campaign. We have built a coalition of support from women, from the LGBT community, and yes, our hard-working members in labor. But yes, my opponent has a Koch Brothers-backed group backing his candidacy. I have not pushed to find dirt on my opponent because it is all part of the public record, especially the fact that he was delinquent over $22,000 in property taxes on his small business that ended up falling on our community in the 15th District.
All right. It's time that we move to closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute, and we will start in reverse order from our media forum. Mr. Schneider, would you please give us your closing statement?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I know who my bosses are. It is you, the people of Cook County and the people of the 15th District. I work for you. I've always represented your values. The Daily Herald editorial board said when they endorsed me, "Schneider has a record of standing up for the interests of the suburbs against the board's majority, and we are concerned about the substantial support Morrison has gotten from the Democratic Party of Cook County and Tony Preckwinkle and not to be a rubber stamp for her." And the Chicago Sun-Times and their endorsement said, "I schooled my opponent during the endorsement, and on taxes, residents and businesses would be better served by Schneider." I'm deeply grateful for their endorsements, but the most important endorsement to me will be your vote on November 6th. I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, your closing statement, please.
First and foremost, I want to thank the League again for putting this forum together, and thank everyone who decided to participate and come and spend their afternoon with us. I'm a local. I grew up here. This is my community. I'm incredibly proud of the campaign that our team has been able to build and all the support we've been able to garner, especially our U.S. Senator Dick Durbin, who said, "It's time that we get a fresh voice in county government." I want to make sure that we have a actual voice representing full-time at every single meeting the voices here in the 15th District. My opponent missed a quarter of his meetings last year alone and still took home a full-time paycheck. I don't think that that is time well-served on the county tax dollars. I want to be a voice every single day for each and every single one of you, which is why I go out and knock over 600 doors per week. If you have any questions, please visit my website, send me an email, come in and approach me. Our office is at Bodie in Salem. I'd be happy to answer any question. And if you are a supporter, please come, join our team. We have 17 days left. Thank you so much.
Thank you. As we bring our forum to a close, would you join me in thanking both candidates for their performance?